All right, thanks for coming, everybody. Don't be afraid, we have some room in the front. No need to sit in the back row, folks. Feel like a preacher here inviting everybody to the altar. So, first order of business, I want to take a look at the minutes of our August 5th meeting. Does anybody on the dais have any objection to the meeting minutes? All right, in that case, I just have one, I'm not sure if that needs to be called out, but I abstained from approving the July 8th meeting minutes. I'm not sure if I need to mention that, but I abstained because I was not there. So, that being said, can I get a motion to approve the meeting from the meeting of August 5th?
Subject to the correction.
Subject to the correction. All right. Motion made by Nat, second?
Second.
Second by Kim, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you very much. All right, before we get rolling, if there are any members of the public here that would like to speak and be heard, we certainly would welcome your participation. This is about items that are not on our agenda. If you want to talk about items that are on our agenda, there'll be ample opportunity to do so. Seeing none, let's move on. Application 212-578, 101 Sprawl Road, this is the lot line change application. Hello and welcome.
Welcome. Hi, I'm Philip Neal with Houzz Survey, I was the engineer.
Mr. Neal, could you just be a little bit closer to the mic?
Yeah, sorry about that.
All right, thank you.
I had to move this over into the...
Would you like a handheld? Would that be better for you?
What's that? Oh, I mean, I could stay kind of solid if it's...
Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For our audience of like 10, that would be beneficial, thank you.
Yes, yes, totally good here. Okay, so what we have here...
Listen, who's listening at home?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So, we have here is an existing house, and we're trying to subdivide off one single lot under the zoning criteria for the R2 district. You can see there, the existing house there, new lot will be over here on Quaker Lane. The idea would be to access the lot through Quaker Lane. This, now it's having to deal with Sprawl Road and Penn Dot. Obviously, there'd be, with that intersection there, you don't, we wouldn't want to put a driveway on that side, I know that's one of the comments coming up, but the idea would be access it through Quaker Lane, as you can see there. And I do have the review letters from the township engineer, and we can go through them.
Okay. I have some questions.
If you have some questions, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, let me drive a little bit here.
Sure, sure.
Could you just tell us what's driving this lot line change? What the intention of the...
Oh, it's not a lot line, it's a subdivision.
I'm sorry, yeah, subdivision, that's right.
I'm just trying to create an additional building lot off the property. He has a lot of acreage. The main reasoning for where it is, you can see there's a easement for the driveway coming through his property. It virtually splits his property into two separate properties because it's the other side of the drive, the access to these properties in the rear come off of that. So, it's almost unused land in the sense of what he uses it for, so his idea was to subdivide it off and create one new lot.
Okay, got it. Is there a plan to develop the second lot?
Correct, yes, and not by him, but his idea would be to sell it to a developer for potential future residential home.
Okay, got it. Just for the record, are you requesting a waiver from Radnor Code 244 dash 27 C4 that requires you to show trees over six inches in caliper?
And that's what we're here to discuss, yes. If that would be amenable to you to push that on to the development, we know at the time of development of this lot, you're going to have to show all trees within the lot. The question was even to me was, do we have to show trees throughout the existing lot even, or just that lot? But again, once you go to develop, all that's going to matter is the new proposed lot. So, nothing's being touched on the existing lot. At that time, we were asked for a waiver to show trees at time of development with the house and infiltration testing, everything like that that will be needed for, you know, the approval of that lot.
Okay, let's, Mr. Norsini, could you comment on that?
Sure. So, I fully understand about doing infiltration testing at this point, right? We're just moving. But it is a survey requirement in our ordinance that you do show that, and I understand there is an existing lot, but that would be, you would have to request a waiver. It would be beneficial to show that, and again, I'm just going by the fact that it's in our ordinance that you do that.
Yeah, sure.
Because I think it would give these folks, not that it's going to change anything, but it gives our commission a clearer picture of what this land looks like.
I got you. And if that's, you know, a pressing issue with, I could definitely discuss it with my client, and I don't think that would be a holdup per se for the, you know, for this moving forward.
Okay.
Now, when you're talking about trees, are you talking about throughout the whole site or just on the proposed lot?
It would be the whole site.
You would want to see them on the whole site?
Again, just going by what the ordinance says, I fully understand your reasoning, but that is the ordinance, so you either share the trees six inches and above in a tree table, all that good stuff, or you request the waiver.
Yeah, so, at this point, we would like to request a waiver till time of development, and then we would show all trees on the proposed lot.
Okay, let's see where this goes. In the same vein, are you requesting a waiver from Radnor Code 255-20.b1n, which requires you to depict features within 500 feet of the site and within the site?
Correct, and I guess the other question, if it was a sticking issue, would be, would an aerial photography work as the existing features in the area? Because that could easily be added without asking for a waiver if that's something that, you know, would replace having to survey 500 feet, because obviously, not everybody's going to allow me on their property to survey and show those existing features.
Sure, got it. Okay, so, walk us through the discrepancy between the size of the existing lot, which is indicated 111,516 square feet, and the two proposed lots, which you indicate as 87,661 square feet and 20,124 square feet? I don't think your math is mathing here.
So, what was missing there, and a chart will help clear this up, is the gross existing lot went to the actual center line of Sprawl Road and Quaker Lane, so now the new proposed lots are gross to the right-of-way. So, what you're missing is the area within the right-of-way as part of the original title. So, if I was just to show a lot tabulation showing that area, it would all make sense, and the numbers would be good. The numbers I show are correct, it's just missing that connection from the right-of-way area already in the, you know, Penn Dot Road and Quaker Lane just wasn't added to the chart. So, that was the missing step that would get you to the correct numbers.
Mr. Phillips, what are your thoughts regarding that?
I agree, that's what we were looking for, is an updated table that shows that, so all the numbers work out.
Okay, so that's what you're looking for, got it. All right, so, I think this is going to be central to our recommendation tonight. Just, can you speak to us of what you refer to as vacating the right-of-way of Quaker Lane, or as...
Yes.
I think there's some discrepancy, and I think we're talking about the same thing. Mr. Phillips, you refer to it south of Woodstone Lane, it's the same right-of-way, correct?
Exactly, there's an existing right-of-way through that property at the rear, or at the, I don't know, I guess that's eastern side of the property there, that goes along the whole rear of the property where the applicant indicates that they're going to vacate that property. In order to vacate that, the township has to say that it's okay to vacate that, and then there would be legal vehicles that would then take you through that process. And one of the issues here is, for whatever reason, if the township chooses not to vacate that, the lot that they're cutting off there, which would be Lot 2, would not be of sufficient size, so that would have to be adjusted.
Yeah, Lot 2 is just over the required 20,000 square feet, and so I think your argument to do this subdivision requires this right-of-way to be resolved, right? In your favor.
Yeah, so I could kind of walk you through kind of a little bit of the history of the right-of-way, why it is the way it is now, and remaining where it is. It's really not in use. You can see...
Before you do that, let me just get some advice from our township engineer here. And I appreciate, should we hear the history now, or should we just have the applicant...
So, I'd actually like to hear from our solicitor, but as Mr. Phillips said, it's the township who vacates the right-of-way, and this is kind of putting it forth the opposite. And we know nothing of this until the plans came in, but I'll pass that on to Mr. Graham.
Right, and you also, when you're vacating this, I mean, not only does the township have a right to it, but if it was a road, the people around it may have a right. So, it's not just the township that has to give up theirs, somebody else, other people may object to it. So, it's not just the township, and the township hasn't spoken to it yet. So, I mean, I mean, from my standpoint, I don't think you can request this. You can list it as an unopened right-of-way, but if you're going to do that, you've got to, you know, go in front of the board and ask them if they're okay with you vacating.
From my understanding, if the 21 years, if the road isn't open, it gets transferred back to the title of my client or the owner of the property.
You're going to have to go through court to do that.
So, is your take, is that is a public road as of this point?
That is still a public right-of-way at this point. So, while you're saying that it may turn back to the owner of that property, it may not, but it's, you've still got to go through all the motions, and you've got to file that case.
So, just approaching the board of, do you have supervisors or commissioners here?
We have commissioners.
Commissioners, so approaching the board of commissioners isn't the way to do it? I've done it before in other townships that way, so...
You can attempt to do it that way, we haven't talked to the board of commissioners yet about it. Again, it was just what's listed on this plan. So, if you want to go through the steps necessary to do that, I would probably get an attorney to see how they're going to start, and then talk to the township staff, and then they're going to go to the board of commissioners, but you just can't list it on this, there's too many, you know, cogs that you need to go through. You're just not at that point, if that makes sense.
So, it seems like we're at an impasse here. So, my, I guess we could take a vote now, or, you know, perhaps we should table the matter, and really, it's your choice of what you'd like us to do?
Well, it sounds like if you were to vote, it obviously would be negative at this point, because without that additional right-of-way, we have no right to create this subdivision.
I'm not going to speculate, but I think you're on the right track.
So, I think the idea is to get a lawyer, a land use attorney, to determine the rights to that road at this point. My understanding that it reverts back to you, but if he's saying, you've got to get that proven in court in order for that to happen.
What I'm saying is that this, where you are right now, cannot grant that to you. That's what I'm saying.
If we approach the commissioners between next, you know, next couple of months or whatever, would that be the way to approach this?
You can, I think you've got to have conversations and kind of work through it. So, I, I mean, I would recommend that you table the matter and then figure out which way you want to approach it. I mean, I am absolutely sure that the township staff and the board of commissioners will at least address it, and then you'll find out where you are.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, Mr. Neal, it sounds like township staff is your first step.
Yeah, it sounds like we've got to get on board with them, and, you know, make sure everybody's on board with what we're discussing. Because again, I know it's a paper road that never got developed, so there is, like you said, underlying rights, but, you know, what are they is what we need to discuss, and I guess get everybody, commissioners, on board with it, so...
Certainly, this matter is a little bit above our pay grade at this point. So, that being said, I'm just going to take a vote to table with your permission?
Sure.
So, in the matter of application 212-578, 101 Sprawl Road, I would like to make a motion to table?
Second.
Second by Lahoda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Neal, appreciate your time. All right. Next item, application 212-29060, West Ave Land Development. So, for the folks that are here or watching at home, the applicant is here pursuant to securing conditional use approval to construct 45 dwelling units at the site of a former municipal parking lot leased to the township by AT&amp;T. The board of commissioners included 17 conditions in the conditional use approval of the project. And what the planning commission is doing tonight is we're going to attempt to make a recommendation to the board of commissioners to grant preliminary land development approval to the applicant. As I mentioned last time we met, we're going to be looking at this two ways. Does the applicant comply with the zoning code, and does the applicant comply with the 17 conditions as imposed by the board of commissioners? And the last time you guys were in front of us, we did table the matter, but you were able to give us an update on the project, including some significant changes in the building facade, building setback, as well as the layout of the public space. And while I hope we're not going to cover much of the same ground, I certainly don't want to step in the toes of design review board, at least as far as architectural design is concerned. I think our opinion of the elements of the design was generally favorable. Mr. Falcone, please take it away.
Thank you very much. We are happy to be back, and I appreciate the intro that will expedite, we hope, this process. So, we are back tonight. We heard some direction from the planning commission at our last meeting, and we went back and took some of that. Most notably, we were asked to clean up the plan and get rid of some of the planned comments that were made, and resubmit, get new review letters, which we've done. A couple of things to note in particular, we were asked to ensure that our traffic study was formally resubmitted, and we've done that. That was a traffic study that was initially prepared in August prior to the conditional use hearing, and then updated in October. So, the updated traffic impact analysis was submitted formally with our last submission of plans, and what that most specifically did was, during the conditional use process, the township asked the applicant to study some additional intersections and the impact of this project on those intersections. So, that updated report, and I think Damon would speak to, did study those additional intersections, and that's what we had submitted. Another item that we were asked to do before coming back was to go to Shade Tree. We had submitted to be on that agenda, which was prior to this meeting, but the Shade Tree canceled that meeting. So, although we had intended to attend to address some of those concerns, it was an impossibility because the meeting itself was canceled.
Before you go too much further, and, you know, our Shade Tree liaison's not here, what is your intention with Shade Tree?
We will be back to them, so we had already been to them once, and we were going to go back at your suggestion, and we will go back before final. So, we know that we have to go back to Shade Tree, but again, we could not comply with that request prior to this meeting.
Okay.
I wanted to just let the board know, and again, Mr. Norsini would probably confirm that we had been on that agenda and were scheduled to appear before the committee.
Yeah, it's surprising that they didn't meet, but in the spirit of your project, I know that certainly if we do vote in the affirmative tonight to recommend, we would make your appearance in front of Shade Tree subject to that.
Yeah, and we would, of course, our plan is to go back no matter the case. So, just to let you know kind of where we were on that. Another item we were asked to consider was converting the bottom floor to all retail, and the impact that that would have on the project. So, we did specifically, Commissioner Kim asked us to go back and look at that. We did, we evaluated it with our architect, and also had additional discussions. The impact would be significant to some of the items that the board of commissioners and the neighboring property owners had specifically asked us to not impact, which is the park out front of the project. That was a very kind of significant change during the conditional use process. Our initial plan had a much smaller green space area. We removed much of that existing park that fronts on Lancaster Avenue. As we went through the process, it was made clear to us that the importance of that park to the neighbors, the importance of those trees to the Shade Tree, and to the commissioners. And so, when we went back, our final plan that was submitted, and it was at the direction of the board of commissioners, was to reinstate that full park that existed out on 30. So, you will note that in the most updated plans, there are no additional changes to make the entire bottom floor retail, and the reason, the impact there would be to put the parking in front of those, in front of those stores.
Just to be clear, and I know Commissioner Kim will get an opportunity to speak, are you saying that there would be no park if there was retail?
We would have, we would put parking out in front of the retail stores to serve those stores, and that would eliminate that green space that is there now.
That would also put you in violation of the conditional use...
It would put us in violation of the conditional use. However, it was something we committed to exploring. Obviously, immediately next door to us is a retail strip, and you can see, you can see the difference in what the frontage for that strip of stores, and the parking, and the way that that works versus what we are proposing, which is primarily green space.
Commissioner Kim, would you like to address this now, or do you want to hold on?
No, I think I need to address this now. So, I want to just state for the record that at the last meeting, I never asked for all the ground floor space to be retail. What I asked is for the retail space that you had programmed on the northwest corner of the property to be moved to the southwest corner of the property, so it has frontage on Lancaster Avenue, where I think retail appropriately should have frontage on a highly trafficked road.
Right, we thought, we thought the request, and certainly, maybe it was not you, Commissioner Kim, there was a request to evaluate retail on the entire frontage of Route 30, and so that was, that was the exploration that we did, just out of respect for the request from the commission. So, there would be impact, no matter where we do it, if we moved retail to the front, and it was something, again, we placed testimony on as well during conditional use. We talked about that at the last planning commission meetings, not to go over that, but we would feel, much like we have placed the parking next to the retail in the back, we believe that parking would have to be, again, from, this is a pure design perspective, we believe that that parking would need to still be with that space, and there would be detrimental impact to the green space, obviously not as significant as the entire bottom floor being...
Yeah, I don't agree that there will be detrimental impact to the open space. I don't think I'm asking for any diminishing of the open space that's already on Lancaster Avenue. All I'm asking for is just the movement of the program, and so your parking can remain where it is in the back of the building. I think it's probably less than 100 feet for somebody to walk from that space to that retail space, and that's an acceptable walk.
So, we definitely hear your concern. It's something we explored. That we did explore specifically during the initial conditional use, which was the single retail space and relocating it around. And we believe it's, from our perspective, from a design perspective, and a full building use perspective, we think it's in the best spot for an overall impact. But we did hear that, and that specifically was explored during conditional use, and ultimately not, not chosen.
May I see the explorations?
May you see the explorations?
That you mean?
We, you can review the testimony from the conditional use hearing.
Okay.
It's, you know, all the discussion around the location of that retail spot, whether there should be a retail spot, where it should be.
Mr. Falcone, is your position that the conditional use hearing, which incorporated the placement of the retail space where it is depicted on your plans today, is it fixed?
It is fixed, yeah, I mean, that was a full hearing process, many hearings in front of the board of commissioners, testimony both from the applicant as well as neighbors that were numerous parties, so yes. We believe that aspect of our project is fixed. If we were to change it, we would have to go back and amend that conditional use to change our plan. And that's just, again, we believe it is a vetted position, but we respect the comments that this committee made, much like we respected the comments the board of commissioners made, and we continue to receive comments from the neighbors, and so we explore this.
Can we bring that on the screen so that we know what we're talking about? And my next question's going to be to our solicitor to ascertain what, whether that's the right position? Because if it is, and that retail spot is fixed... So, while you guys are setting up, Solicitor, could you help us here?
I don't know if I, I did not read the conditional use before I came here, and I apologize for that. I was not involved in that aspect, so I would have to look at what the decision was from the conditional use, and I apologize for not looking over that before I came.
Sure, and I do not recall that the retail space position was part of the 17 conditions?
It was not a condition. It was not a condition. It is part of our testimony, which is incorporated into the condition. So, when the board issues its decision, it is, you must move forward consistent with your testimony as well as these 17 conditions.
I'm going to have to look into that. I mean, if it's not a condition, then it's not there, but I understand what he's saying is that they're going to be consistent with the, with the plans they presented, and they're going to be consistent with the testimony that's there. While I don't think that's concrete, I think there is an argument there for that, and I would have to go back to, I believe, John Rice was at that conditional use.
He was.
And so, I would, I would refer to him, and I will get that answer for you.
So, it's more than simply the location of the store, right? So, it impacts the traffic impact analysis, it impacts the way that that analysis is done, where we have our entrance, where cars are parked, where we have foot traffic. It all went into, again, very specific testimony from our traffic engineer and our engineer. So, it was, it was fully vetted, the location and whether it could be moved. So, that was something that we were asked to consider, which we did.
Yeah, to be fair, this, so, we have a conditional use order. We have, we're standing on the shoulders of four days of hearings, and this is, this is a land development application.
Correct.
And I want to fully explore Commissioner Kim's commentary, but at the same time, it seems like we're locked into the design, but I want to make sure that we are.
Yeah, and it's also, it's the desired design. I mean, had we not been in front of the conditional use, if we didn't have a conditional use, and we showed up today with our plan, this is a, a much preferred design with respect to incorporating retail into this project. We think from numerous perspectives, not just marketability of the space, but impact on the design of the building, the way the building fronts onto Route 30, it would, it would have, it would have a change to that. And again, based on our analysis and the experts that we incorporate with, we believe that retail parking should be immediately adjacent to the space. Now, whether the commissioners disagree with that, I don't have, I don't have a say in that. It's not my area of expertise, but what I can tell you is, the brokers that we communicated with say that's the best way to serve a retail spot, is to have space that's immediately adjacent to it. That gives it the highest likelihood for success. And so, we, we hear that. And so, this building was designed considering all of those things, and whether or not it was even necessary to have a retail component or a commercial component. I mean, that was the very first threshold question, and I think there are people, both on staff and on the board of commissioners, that would, would argue as to whether or not it was necessary. And so, it's there because the commissioners wanted a retail component, and it's in the location it's in, because ultimately, through the process, we believed that was the best location for this project. That was a part of our conditional use, which, which helped to shape the use of this project pursuant to the code. We are now kind of well beyond that and into a land development position, and so... And so we're talking about the design of a building and the location of a retail space that I feel like we're starting to drift outside of the parameters of the ordinance as to why we're actually in front of you all tonight. And I say that with all due respect, but only because we had four lengthy evenings only discussing the use of this building, and the impact of this building, and the impact of the residential units and the retail components. So at some point, the applicant moves forward with what it believes to be the best design, and when the commissioner said, yep, this works, that's where we were.
To be fair, we're not here to relitigate the conditional use hearing.
Right.
De novo, right?
Correct.
But I think with a diverse body as is represented here, we do want to make some commentary, and certainly that's within our purview.
Totally. And we're trying to be responsive to that, and that's why, obviously, I brought it up in this discussion, because I know that it was meaningful to you all, and I did not want you to think that we disregarded your opinions or your comments. That's just not, it's not what I believe, and it's certainly not what this applicant has ever believed. They're, yeah, they are kind of face-forward folks, so.
That being said, and, you know, as Chair, I only have one opinion, and I do want to defer to the body here. We don't want to relitigate the conditional use, and we are sort of getting a package deal here. Unfortunately, with a conditional use already litigated, we have the conditions, and we don't want to send this on its way as a different plan than the Board of Commissioners approved. That being said, we're certainly free to speak our mind as to what we think.
And we do, we want to hear that. It's why we're here. So, you know, we want to hear everything you all have to say.
Thank you.
And so the last piece, before I'm going to turn it over to the engineer to walk through the comments on the updated letters, was that we continue to have our neighbor meetings, although that's one of the conditions. We did have another meeting before this meeting. I believe there were three or four participants from the neighborhood on that call, as well as Commissioner Larkin, who, as you know, is spearheading these meetings. The feedback continues to be very positive, and the number of individuals that are engaged at that level at this point is definitely not as many as were during the conditional use hearing. And we believe that is because the project is moving in a, in a good direction in responding to their feedback and their comments to this point. So we think we're, we're doing good stuff, we're getting good feedback from Commissioner Larkin, which we think is important, and we're, we believe getting positive response from the neighbors. So with all of that being said, we did get two updated review letters from staff, and I'll turn it over to Rob Lambert, who can walk through the, the new comments that we got from staff, if that would be acceptable to the planning commission.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Falcone, before you sat, sit down.
Yeah.
We did have a very lengthy discussion last time about public participation. It's good that you're continuing to do that, you're also subject to do it, that's part of the 17 conditions. And for the record, if you want to participate in the process of how this project shapes up, you should contact Commissioner Larkin, who's the Commissioner for the First Ward.
That's right.
So.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Good evening. Rob Lambert. I think last time that we met last month, Roger Phillips for Gannett Fleming, I think was comfortable with the plan, so I'm going to focus on the Gilmore letter. I think that's what we really talked about last time.
How do you want to do it? Do you want to go with your comment?
I was going to go kind of high level, and then if you want to drill down to specific things, I'm happy to drill down. Last time, we talked about some additional dimensions on various sidewalks and plans, driveways, which has all been provided on the most recent revision. There was also a question about some of the turning templates. We provided turning templates both on the surface and throughout the below-surface parking area. And I believe we're in agreement with Damon that everything that we've submitted is, you know, acceptable for preliminary plan. If there's any specific comments you'd like to look at, I'm happy to look at them.
You know, I always do. So let's, let's start with Saldo comment. This is on the Gilmore letter dated August 23rd, page 3, comment 3 under Saldo. So walk us through your response on comment 3, where it talks about your parking design being inappropriate for two-way traffic.
Are you looking at Gannett or Gilmore?
Gilmore.
Gilmore, okay.
Gilmore 3.
Yep.
Under Saldo. D3.
Oh, so this was just a, simply a clarification. On, we didn't include, and I clarified this with Damon after he wrote the letter, was there are existing parking spaces on the south side of the AT&amp;T building that exist that are going to be removed as part of this development, right? So they were, they hang over where the property line would be, so the, so the parking that he's referring to is the parking actually on the AT&amp;T property.
Right.
And so that's, those parking spaces are not going to exist after this development.
Mr. Phillips? Do you concur?
I'll take this one.
It's your comment, actually, Mr. Phillips, but...
It was Gilmore.
It's in the Gilmore letter.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right.
So my understanding is, yeah, those parking spaces are going to be eradicated. Rob, can you also speak to the AT&amp;T building? Will they continue to have enough parking since we were, since spaces will be eliminated there?
Correct. I think, as everybody's aware, that building has very minimal use. The east side of the building will continue to have parking, and that lot is on, again, you can see, oop, too far. So all on the east side of the building is an existing parking lot which services that building.
Comment 4, you will comply on that? Minimum five-foot radius?
Yes. And I think there's, just for clarification, I think that was also referring to the West Ave parking, right? I was trying to kind of bifurcate some of our comments between the development parcel and the West Ave lot. On the development parcel, we complied. On the West Avenue lot, there were some that were under that, we're continuing to work with the township and township staff to design the striping plan for that West Avenue lot.
Let's talk about the general comments. The truck turning templates of, for the trash truck and the SU-30 truck. What is the SU-30 truck? Can you find that?
It's a straight body, so it's like a box truck.
Okay. 30-foot long?
I believe, I think, I can't remember if it's a 30-foot box or a 30-foot wheelbase. Damon might know off the top of his head.
That's correct. That's your typical, like FedEx truck or UPS truck.
Okay, got it. So comment 4 and 5, could you address that under general comments, same letter?
Yeah, so comment 4 was that there's an overlap with the curb sidewalk areas and the, and where there's spaces that are going to be removed. So what Damon was pointing out is, is when the vehicle actually backed up, it clipped a little bit of the curb at the loading area, and then when it pulled out, the spaces that are no longer going to be there overlapped with them. So fixing the radius there, we just increased the radius by a foot or two, and it solved any conflict there. 5 is just talking about what size vehicles will be accessing the site, and that was no problem to add that note to the plan.
Mr. Drummond?
The way he stated was correct. It sounds like a lot of, some of this will be cleaned up in final design. It's minor enough that I, I do believe that that can happen pretty easily with no, no trouble.
Okay, got it. Comment 6, in the same vein. So there's a truck restriction on Bellevue and West Ave. How would deliveries be made to the retail portion of the site?
So it's a, as we've talked about, a small retail section. The deliveries are likely going to be, you know, your Amazon, FedEx, UPS-sized trucks, just like they service the road today. In talking with Damon, one suggestion was to add a, accept local deliveries to that sign, so it's not taken literally. If taken literally, people on the street wouldn't be able to get their trash picked up, right? Because you couldn't have a trash truck going down the street. So adding that placard to it, it would service both the existing use of the street as it happens today, and it would just clarify that usage.
Mr. Drummond, you concur?
I concur.
All right. As far as locating the stairs and elevators in the parking garage, Mr. Drummond, does that need to be done now, or can we save that for later in the final?
Me and Mr. Lambert did discuss that. It sounds like where he has anticipated the elevators and stuff, I think that can be resolved in final design.
So if we look at the inset on the plan, we have areas set aside for the elevators and pedestrian access. We actually have striping for pedestrians, and so the, the space is allocated for it, we just haven't shown, you know, an actual step.
Got it. And general comment 10 about the location of the handicapped space?
Yep, so that was no problem. We can add striping to the end spot. It works out with grades, it's in a kind of a central location. We would add additional striping there for the accessibility.
Mr. Drummond, is there different space requirement for handicapped spaces than regular spaces?
I mean, handicap space does require an accessible aisle next to it. I believe that's something that they can provide. Handicap space is usually an eight-foot space with a, if it's only one space there, and then it's van parking with an eight-foot aisle.
Which, our allocation there, now I just point out, I believe we have six parking spaces at 60 feet. We can actually provide, we have nine-by-18 parking spaces, so we stripe it at nine, we actually wind up with the eight and eight. So eight-foot space with an eight-foot aisle is 16 feet. We had the extra six feet, so basically just restriping that area provides that ADA space.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioners, questions you have?
So, I mean, I don't mean to just keep talking about the retail component, but because Mr. Falcone mentioned that you guys consulted a broker, what kind of retail tenant are you guys anticipating?
I'm the engineer, I don't, I don't work with leasing.
Hello. Ken Kearns, part of the applicant team. So we don't have a defined retail tenant in mind. We wanted to keep it kind of open-ended and flexible. I'm in the retail business as a retail owner, but I'm also a retail brokerage company that does this for a living. So, and again, to, to the location and to what we're planning there, keeping it open-ended and basically having something that is low-impact for the traffic, for the site, for parking, was kind of the goal to design around, which is why it ended up where it is and the size it is, and again, adjacent to parking, and also the ability to serve that space for trash and for deliveries. So, because retail has a different type of traffic need in the service side of it. So all of that was, you know, kind of taken into consideration as to where that landed.
Okay. I'm imagining it's not any kind of retail that requires special equipment or anything like that, right?
We, right now, have an empty box. And again, from our, our perspective, we've got to be very cognizant of, there's going to be residents in the building that live there and sleep there, so it can't be anything that's got noise or smell or whatever it might be. So we're just trying to design the right-sized box based on what kind of lower-impact retail tenants use, and then also, obviously, we're kind of limited to parking. So all that, all of those things went into the soup that kind of landed this where it was. And again, we, we went around and around on this with commissioners during the process, and we just, you know, again, this, all that stuff was driven by a lot of the analysis done and a lot of the different variables that kind of come into designing something like that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
But Ken, will there be any restrictive use on the space, basically within the condo association?
We're not there yet, honestly. I could imagine the residents don't want food, and we've seen that in other projects where we do that because of trash and smell and that kind of thing. I'd imagine we'll have some restrictions on it, like we don't want a bank in there, and we don't want to, you know what I mean? Like, there are things that we just kind of exclude. But that's, we're not even close to the association bylaws and docs yet and this kind of thing. But we'll, obviously, we know what we don't want there and what the residents won't want there, we don't want to impact our marketability, for sure.
One question I have is where, I'm not sure if you need to show it for this meeting, but where is the trash contained for the building itself, and what is the accessibility for the trash truck?
Yes, so this is this section here on the ground floor. This is, this is the top of the grade drop here, so this is where the ramp comes down, kind of to this entrance.
Okay, so Lancaster there, okay.
Yeah, and if you look at that termary slide, you can see that was all studied with the truck access into that area. That's, that's what all those lines are into this corner of the building.
So they're going to basically just be, if they're going, I can't remember directions, right, west on Lancaster Avenue, they're going to take a right onto that alley, then they're going to be taking a left and backing into the space.
And it's, and it's residential trash and service there, that's not for the retail, so that is lower density. You don't need a big trash truck doing that.
But that's still going to be like a private, a private hauler, that's not going to be the Radnor Township, correct?
Correct, correct. The tenant next door, actually, this is, just serves this, their trash is back here, actually served this by hand through these alleys with dumpsters, just because of the limitations they have on the property side. So this will be, this is residential trash, so it's very different than commercial trash.
What other questions do you guys have? Okay. Mr. Drummond?
There's one other comment I did want to discuss with the applicant, is comment number 10 under our Saldo comments regarding angled parking in the drop-off area. I knew, me and Rob had some discussion on that, and if you can inform the, the board here of what are possible options if we cannot meet, if it, if the spaces need to be longer as discussed.
Correct. So what this plan shows is the code required nine-by-18 parking spaces. In talking with Damon, he suggested a preference for a different-sized space for angled parking. So one idea would actually be to just simply flip this parking, so it's accessed off of this common driveway, or, you know, the driveway that we're providing similar to the retail parking, and we would just provide the perpendicular parking there, and then this really just becomes a drop-off loop. And so the parking would be bifurcated from that drop-off loop. So that would just be a simple nine-by-18 perpendicular parking space versus the angled parking space.
So if I could come, so Mr. Lambert said the code required. I think there's ambiguity to the code, so I, not doubting what you said, but I, I don't know that that is code required. I think that's an item for discussion, and that's why Mr. Drummond brought that up. Mr. Drummond?
Yeah, what we discussed was, the way the code is written is, and Wayne, there's certain angled parking for off-street parking, and there's angled, and there's parking for on-street, I mean, for, on a site. The parking on the site is called for nine-by-18, but it does not segregate like angled parking. And when you have angled parking, that's typically more than nine-by-18. So my, my thought would be, it would go back to the other section of the code where we do have angled parking. And that, and angled parking is a little longer in that part of the code, which is, I believe, section 29, I want to say.
And so Mr. Norcini's point, we do think there's some ambiguity, but we just wanted to, and what we had discussed with Damon was, no matter what the interpretation ends up being, we can comply. So if the ultimate decision is striping and size is one way, we can go that way, we have an answer that would not require any additional relief, or if ultimately the determination is our parking as shown works, that's great, too. But we worked with Damon, we provided an alternative that is 100% compliant. So once we get determination with staff, the solicitor will, will do whatever they say.
So, Mr. Falcone, my only thing was, the way Mr. Lambert presented it was not the way we looked at it, that it was code-compliant, and I wanted to make sure this commission was aware of that ambiguity.
Yep.
And our traffic engineers' thoughts.
So we were just, wanted, I wanted to say we're in agreement, and we'll, no matter how it goes, we can comply.
So, Mr. Norcini, how should, should we lock in for today, or should we make this subject to, whatever decision we make, make subject to working with the township? Well, if the applicant's attorney says they can comply with what our traffic engineer feels is the code-compliant length of the parking space...
feels is the code-compliant length of the parking space, I think that would be appropriate.
So yeah, I, I think we, we have one interpretation. I think the township has a slightly different one. I think it would be appropriate for us to say, ultimately, if the determination is made by staff and the solicitor that the code requirement is as Mr. Drummond says, then we'll go with that. If ultimately the solicitor and staff determine that it is as we show to be compliant, then we'll stick with what we have. But no matter what the determination is, we will comply.
That's great. I mean, and really, alls we're looking for is the future residents that are going to live there, right? That's all this is about. It's not about right, wrong, who's right, who's wrong. It's the people that live there that are going to be our future residents that can park safely and don't have to worry.
So we will continue to work with them, but no matter what the condition might be, we can comply with it.
Okay. I just don't want it to be more complicated of a motion if we, if we make one tonight. Got it. Mr. Drummond, any additional comments?
I do not have any additional comments on that.
Okay. Mr. Phillips.
I'm good. I have no comments.
Commissioner Nat?
Can I ask just a side question? I'm actually looking at the conditional use, and conditional use number two, that the applicant pays a contribution to the township for $10,000 per unit. How is that $10,000 derived? Does anyone know?
I can speak to that. So that was, that was just a number given to us, recommended by the Board of Commissioners as...
So I'm, I'm just curious, because from my own prior experience with my career, my life, it was always, it was always a percentage of the construction budget, they made a contribution to the juris, the local jurisdiction. I'm just wondering why the town, why the board had never looked at it that way.
The board asked us to make a $10,000 per unit contribution, and we agreed.
All right.
So before I turn it over, I think you turned it over to public comment, I wanted to make one more note. It was just advised. So Commissioner Larkin has set all of the remaining public meetings through the end of the year. All of those dates have been set. So anybody that wants to participate can communicate with Commissioner Larkin, and all of those dates have been set, so they can calendar them appropriately through the end of the year.
All right, sounds good. Mr. Falcone, great. Mr. Norcini, one, one other opportunity?
I think I've used up all my opportunities. I'm fine, thank you.
There, there's yet another item on the agenda, so it gets reset. Commissioners? Got it. Okay, let's hear from the public. Please come up. If you are coming up to make public comment, I'd like to respectfully ask you to limit your comments to five minutes.
Is this one? Oh, yes, obviously it is. John Aiken, 116 South Bellevue Avenue.
Welcome, Mr. Aiken.
Right in the midst of, I'd say, the eye of the storm, perhaps. There's been a lot of attention given to emergency issues, sewer infrastructure, not too much touching on environmental and ecological impact, but a lot of time spent on ta, on traffic and parking, which has been problems for decades, and today is perhaps more of a problem with, oh, by the way, good evening and thank you for your time. Parking and traffic are a problem downtown. If you get into some of the side streets where you have, the side streets were not designed for four lanes of highway. And if on a side street, like Midland Avenue, you have cars parked on both sides, then for two cars passing down there, one of the cars often has to either slow down and edge over. It can be a little dicey. And traffic and parking has always been a problem and will be, and I don't think it has been sufficiently addressed. Back in 2005, some of these same issues were being discussed by residents. There was a $6 million bond issue that was on the ballot back then in 2005. And two residents wrote this into the local paper, that they were talking about getting this bill passed, and it, they, they say, they stayed here. "It offers Pennsylvania's a unique opportunity to preserve farms, save open land, protect watersheds, and repair environmental damage across the state. Do we not have enough problems associated with land development? For example, traffic, crowding, flooding, noise, et cetera. While development may increase municipal tax bases, it also raises costs for services and infrastructure. Open space, on the other hand, boosts surrounding property values and enhances the quality of our life." In terms of parking, sewer infrastructure, environmental impact, traffic and parking. At one point, at one of the meetings, I asked the developers, developer's traffic expert, what measures or procedures have been put in place in the event of a fire in the underground garage, with the, very difficult to get into it in an emergency. And if some cars are out of their spots or something, or blocking the way, that could be more dangerous. The sewer infrastructure is a major problem. Now, do I understand, has a sufficient sewer structure, infrastructure process been done? And has anyone put a camera down into the sewer systems? For example, on Bellevue Avenue, all of us residents, we have lateral feeds into the main drain running down the center of the road. Now, back in 2008, the township passed an ordinance that put the cost of maintaining it from the curb to the pipe in the street is now on the owners, on the, on the residents. It's up to them to pay for any problem with that. In 2008, that ordinance, it may have been in the paper, but when I found out about it about 10 years ago, I went and got a copy of it, and I spoke with about 100 people locally in my area. Not a single person had ever seen any notification of that and knew nothing about it, and still assumed that the township was responsible. I'm responsible for my sewage and water from the house to the curb. And that's what a lot of people still think, that the township takes care of curb to the, to the main drain in the pipe. Now, has a camera been, there are questions about the sewer infrastructure. And in the township's, what are inflow and infiltration? Down here, why is water a problem? And I learned from landscapers that you want to deal with things, follow the water. And in here, it says, under what, why is this water a problem? And I'm quoting from your own documents here. "Too much clear water often causes sewer backups and overflows when it rains. It also leads to higher processing fees that get passed on to property owners." And you've got sanitary sewer pipes and sewer pipes here. Has a camera been put down into...
Mr. Aiken, one more minute, please.
I, I can answer Mr. Aiken's question. There was a very detailed study done on the sewer.
Standing in, please.
There was a very detailed study done on the sewer. The, that study was based on requirements by staff and consultants. So we did approve that, and there is sufficient capacity for this.
Was there a camera put down there?
Yes, there was.
Okay.
There was cameras, there was meters, there was...
Well, I'll, I'll leave everything else out, and the question I will ask you is, if there's a problem such as backing up sewer into the basements of our homes, how will this affect this project? How will this affect an antiquated infrastructure? And how will it fit? And if there's a problem for us residents, and we have a backup into our basement, how much money is going to be applied to that? How quickly will a resolution be reached? Or will we have to live with the unintended consequences in our lives? So I'll leave you with that question about if there's a problem, and we have a sewage problem, or any other number of problems that don't seem to have been addressed with parking, traffic, so forth and so on, how will we be taken care of as residents? And I've lived in Radnor Township since 1951, and I've seen over the years, a lot of lost land, a lot of problems with green spaces, and then trying to bring it back. And the more concrete we put down, the more problems we have off, we have with runoff water, and the more development is, we have more problems with, with dealing with the sewage waste.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken.
And I'll end with that. And I really do appreciate what you're doing, and I realize that developers want to develop, architects want to design, and builders want to build. And I appreciate the amount of money and time that you have put into this. And I'd like to see a little more consideration for us, and I get an impression sometimes, that you're not just quite sure about where you're standing, and it's followed by, has this or that been handled? So I think there are loose ends that still need to be tied up nice and neat.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. So a couple of points that you raised, and thank you for your time. Number one, there, there are conditions on this project. Condition eight is diversion of stormwater runoff from the AT&amp;T parking lot. That was certainly one of the considerations by the Board of Commissioners. There's also a sewage capacity certification study, which is condition 10. So all of those thoughts are there. You did make a comment regarding potentially a fire situation in the, in the garage space. It is sprinkled, it's condition 15. That being said, your overarching question, I believe, and Mr. Norcini, maybe he can help us out with that. What if this project is, becomes an overcapacity situation on our sewer, sewers?
So the requirements that we, I'm going to back up. So we have to sign, we, me, the township, representing the township, have to sign off on this capacity verification, right? Certification. So it was an arduous task, we put on the developer, to make us happy with the fact that we did concur, there is capacity for this development. If there was not, we're going to hold a different conversation. There was televising, there was flow meters put in. Roger Phillips, myself, Patty Kaufman, we all looked at this and concurred. So they were strict requirements, I put on them to make this determination for that sole reason. And we do this for other developments also, because in five years, we don't want that to happen. Now, the resident, Mr. Aiken noted backups. I've been dealing with municipal sanitary sewer systems for some 20 years. There is a whole host of reasons why lines back up, not necessarily from this development, and our fantastic public work crews deal with them. So I think there's two issues, but we gave them stringent requirements for capacity certification, they met those requirements.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Norcini. Okay. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Angus Ronald McGilvray. I'm a resident at Bellevue Avenue. I just want to get some clarification about, I don't know how the point, but it's right where the, the easement will be for emergency vehicles to the east of the AT&amp;T building, coming to the driveway that's on the east of the building. And also, will that be able to, is that, will that be open all the time? How, how is that going to be configured? And would that also alleviate some of the delivery trucks? And you talked about delivery trucks for the commercial part of the building, but any apartment building is like a hotspot for delivery trucks. So if that was accessible for trucks as well as emergency vehicles, I think that would be a definite plus.
It, it is not accessible for anything other than emergency services vehicles. It's an easement that's already been submitted to the township, reviewed by the solicitor, reviewed by AT&amp;T. It's for emergency access, and it's for that sole purpose, which was what we were asked to, to provide. And it gets the traffic out to West Avenue in the event that there's an emergency that would preclude emergency vehicles from accessing the site off of Bellevue.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Mr. Falcone.
May I have one more minute?
What will it actually look like there? What do you, how would you do that? Is this going to, how do you...
Mr. Falcone, I think he's asking for, for the plan, what that looks like in the plan.
So it, it's essentially access over the paved areas in the parking lot, coming from West Avenue down to the property, or West Avenue. So you have the, the parking area, which is paved, and that's where we're going to take emergency access.
What happens, David, please? What happens if there's, during the middle of the day, when you have a situation?
Well, so there's a drive aisle down the middle of that parking lot.
That would be wide enough for, for fire trucks?
I'm sorry? That's what this shows.
Okay.
And again, so part of the easement was that AT&amp;T can't close it off. So that's part of the agreement that we gave to Solicitor Rice, and then ultimately to AT&amp;T.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Mr. Aiken, just let me hear from the rest of the public. You'll, you'll get a second bite at the apple.
Ryan Brier from 203 West Avenue. I just wanted to discuss condition 11, which was the applicant shall perform a pedestrian connectivity study and shall study traffic circulation and parking congestion during the late afternoon, evening hours to identify potential improvements. When I look at the others in the Gilmore letter dated end of August, they all mention specifically the applicant indicates they will comply. This one, however, indicates the applicant has discussed the requirement with the township and will continue to coordinate. And when I look at the SADO comments under number two in that same letter, these seemed to be more justification for the existing traffic study that was done. So I was curious if the applicant still does intend to conduct a traffic study as was laid out in condition 11.
So it's different than the traffic study, right? So the updated traffic study has been submitted, but we are going to continue through this pedestrian impact study and work that out with staff, and we've agreed to do that before final, and staff has agreed that that's the appropriate time in which to do that.
That's correct. Me and Mr. Falcone spoke on that. So yes, they do plan on doing that.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Anybody else? Before Mr. Aiken.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate it. On any given day, I walk from my house to the, to the Wawa and get some of their delicious sandwiches. And I, on one day, a couple days ago, as I walked there from my house, I didn't get all over the parking lot. But in order to illustrate some of the, you're, you're right that there can be multiple reasons for backups. On just one walk over, I picked up this trash and debris, most of which is coming from Wawa. If you go down to the Whole Foods parking lot, you'll find a fair amount of debris in the parking lot there.
Mr. Aiken, we, we get it. You don't have to produce all of it.
Well, what you have here, these are metal caps and other ones that get flattened, and here's some kind of metal conduit here that's made out of steel. And all of this gets into the water system. Cigarette butts with filters that expand, they are not biodegradable. And this is what gets washed. Now, it's great when it rains, because the parking lots get cleaned out, and it all goes down the drain in Wayne. It's the main drain, whatever it is. But this is some of what we're dealing with, with things that are getting into our, the water system and causing additional problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Aiken.
I thought a picture sort of worth a thousand words, but I didn't have a camera.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration to these details. I like that you, you appear to be attending to them. And I'll put this in the trash and recycling when I get home.
Thank you.
Could I just ask one last question? I'm just looking at the plans and just trying to understand stuff from a pure practical standpoint. The access into the garage, that road, I'm assuming that's a private, that's private. So what happens if, you know, should, should Mother Nature hit us with a blizzard or whatever? How is this snow removal going to take place? So there actually would, so how, I mean, it's private, but where do they push the snow? How would that work? Any, any thoughts?
So after living in a condo for many years, if you have a significant snowfall, they actually remove a lot of the snow. They'll come with Bobcats and lift it into a truck and pull it away. The good thing is, is our whole parking field is actually basically underground, right? So, you know, thinking of where snow falls, right? We have our drive lane and then the driveway here. So those areas would be removed. lane and then the driveway here. So, those areas would be removed. There's, you know, small areas, they can pile it up, but they will be removing it when needed.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Final call? Public?
I haven't held this really closely, but my concern is-
Ma'am, what's your name?
Oh, my name is Sylvia Severance. And-
And where do you live?
I live on Overhill Road.
Okay, thank you.
And Overhill goes into West, and it's a problem now, where we have blind corners in there. Are you going to do anything about that corner?
A little closer to the mic.
When you come from the AT&amp;T building, and they turn left to go to Wawa, on Bloomingdale, and what, Overhill's here. It's a mess. Is there any consideration over that area?
In terms of what?
How can we be safe walking there? I walk around the block, and the visibility's bad. Have you done a traffic study as far down as Overhill? Which is a block past, two blocks past the-
Eagle and West?
You went as far as Eagle and-
Yeah.
We went as far as Eagle and West?
Okay. Well, how about that, where Overhill comes in and Bloomingdale comes in?
Yeah, I can't picture the intersection.
But Bloomingdale, Lancaster and Bloomingdale is part of it?
But, but West and Bloomingdale.
Bloomingdale Avenue and Banbury Way Park we're studying.
Oh, maybe that's Banbury Way, yeah. Maybe that is Banbury Way. I'm sorry.
So, that was studied, the traffic.
It was. Because it's bad now. Are you going to do anything about, are you studying?
Can we just get the applicant to come up for a second and talk to us why the study was done, where the traffic study was done, where it was done?
So, I can give you the intersections that we studied.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And give us kind of the rationale as to why those particular intersections were included and-
Yeah. So, the rationale behind the intersections was they were specifically requested by the township. So, we thought that was a pretty good guide. We have Lancaster and Bellevue, Bellevue and the driveway, West Ave and Bellevue, West Ave and the AT&amp;T driveway, North Wayne Avenue and West Wayne and Station, I'm sorry, and West Avenue and Station. We have North Wayne Ave and Poplar, West Avenue and Banbury, Eagle Road and West, Lancaster Avenue and Wayne Avenue, and Lancaster Avenue and Bellevue Avenue and Banbury. Does that sound right to you, Damon and Steve?
No.
No. Those are the intersections that we were asked to study.
Mr. Drummond, just briefly, could you explain to us why you included those and not perhaps the streets that are outlying that radius?
Sure. We take a look at the trip generation and kind of determine what the scale or what the intersections are, kind of going out, what's going to be mostly impacted. That's how we kind of, that's how we decide where, what intersections to study. We don't want them studying 20 intersections, but we try to get a good amount of intersections to determine what the impact's going to be.
And so, the idea is that once you go beyond a certain radius, the impact is not measurable?
It becomes dispersed a lot more, because cars are going from different directions. It's not as impactful as you go further out.
Got it. Thank you. Okay.
One aspect of all the studies that were done for the traffic that came out of the conditional use hearings was, no study, no data was collected at lunchtime, the evenings, or weekends, when most of the traffic for all the restaurants in Wayne are occurring. So, that's where there was supposed to be additional data collected. In the traffic studies, it said, it doesn't say, it doesn't say how many cars go on Bellevue Avenue. It says not available. It might have the interest, so that if there's data on that, I couldn't find it in the study. It also says that 78% of the cars that are going to come out of the new parking lot on West Avenue are going to go down Bellevue and are going to turn right. So, 78%, no one's going to go to the east. They're all going to go west. So, the traffic studies were very criticized quite a bit during the conditional hearing, and there's supposed to be additional data collected. And if the current study is from October, that's not after the conditional use hearing.
So, we're not going to relitigate the traffic study, but we would like to hear why perhaps we weren't using lunchtime data or evening data.
I don't have the traffic study here in Friday right now. I believe we did talk to the applicant's engineer. They were providing some of that information. But typically, what is used is the AM peak, which is seven to nine, and then the PM peak is four to six. Now, that, we've done other studies where we do have restaurants in the area, and the peak hour is still the commuter peak, which is four to six usually. It's, that's the highest volume, that's the highest volume you're going to see on the road usually. The dinner peak, and like, which would be maybe six to seven, maybe six to eight, it's a lot, it's a lot less traffic typically during that time.
Mr. Drummond, who determines these peak times, seven to nine and four to six? Is there an independent body that?
That is the typical peak times that are used within the industry, as, as you're doing with PennDOT or even other municipalities. And also writing in mini codes is, that's the time of, that you should be studying. Also, with IT, that's the time that they use. IT is the Institution of Transportation Engineers.
Okay, got it. So, the idea is that if you go off of, if you go beyond those times, those peak times, that the data becomes-
Your traffic diminishes in volume.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any additional commissioner comment? Okay. That being said, so, we heard a lot of testimony tonight. Thank you for giving us an update on where we stand. I think, you know, some of these items are still a work in progress. But, the applicant is seeking preliminary approval. So, some of the items are legitimately TBD. That being said, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval. So, in the matter of application 2129, 21229060 West Ave land development, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve preliminary land development, subject to the consultant's review letters, the latest consultant's review letters, as well as the applicant meeting and attaining resolution with Shade Tree Commission. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by nat? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for your time. You're right. Stay tuned. Second item is application 212825, same applicant. And what we're looking at is a preliminary final minor subdivision.
Hi, I'm Dave Falcone. Good to see you guys. So, we are here as part of a, what I would consider a simple subdivision plan. It's to divide the existing AT&amp;T property into two lots to allow us to essentially purchase the property that we're proposing to develop. The reason we are putting forth this plan at this point, it's because our agreement of sale with AT&amp;T requires that we close by a certain date. And that date will not allow us to move all the way through the land development process. So, AT&amp;T needs to subdivide the property. That triggers our closing, and then ultimately, we close. One of the things you'll note is, I spoke about with Solicitor Rice, was this subdivision is for division purposes only. And it's noted on the plan that there will be no land development derived as a result of this specific subdivision. So, your approval of the division of the property does not grant us any rights to develop the property. Those rights are derived through the land development process. So, this is simply creating two compliant lots that AT&amp;T can then sell one to us. And that's, that is the plan itself. And we have really nothing more to present on that. We did submit and get a review letter from staff. Rob can walk you through that, but it's, it's pretty straightforward, thankfully.
Yeah. For, for a minor item, your request did generate quite a few comments from our consultant. So, maybe Mr. Lambert, you can address some of those items?
Yes, we had the Gennett Fleming review letter. I think there was three comments. The, two comments, one was the significant features within 500 feet, which is a standard waiver. We'll request that waiver. The second one is a standard comment, talking about the road right of way. That it's really up to the commissioners to request additional right of way. And then the third comment is simply that we just need a deed at time of recording.
Okay. There's a couple of thoughts here. So, I know the township requests a right of way, but your land development plan expects 60 feet, and your, your plan indicates that, that you're granting 50.
It was simply showing the existing. The land development was kind of handling all of the proposed pieces of it. Again, we were making this very simple, that it was just this lot line.
So, whether it's 50 or 60, you will comply?
Correct. It would be either it gets effectuated with the land development, or we can effectuate it as part of this, if that was preferred.
Okay. Talk to us about the two impervious discrepancies that you have. So, you're in-
There was a revised letter. I don't know if you, the August 26 letter. Which letter are you looking at? I think you were looking at the-
I'm, I'm looking at August 19th. I don't think I had the 26th. Is that part of our package, folks? August 26th?
It doesn't appear to be.
Okay. So-
So, those are the three comments that I referred to.
So, I appreciate the August 26th letter. It was not part of our package. So, Solicitor, how do you want us to dispense with this? The applicant made some revisions on the calculations.
They did make some revisions on the calculations. I mean, I would just put that in, if, if you're fine with all of those, because obviously, your comments were on the other letter. But if you're fine with that, you're going to make a complaint to that.
Let me examine it first. So, it's highly unusual to review a consultant's letter at the hearing itself. That being said-
Hopefully, considering the simplicity of it.
Yeah. You know, you're, you're, I think you used the same calculator as 101 Sprout Road here, on the impervious calculations.
That, that was, that was a carryover from a previous plan. There was the, I don't have the, I don't have the 19th letter in front of me, but there was a couple of things kind of on both sides there that we cleaned up with the reviewer, you know, before it was issued, but apparently, it was issued.
So, there's other commissioners here. Here's how we'll do it. They reviewed the letter of the 19th. You have a 20th, the letter of the 26th that's more accurate. We're just going to say, subject to correcting math errors if we were to approve. So, for the record, you're asking for a waiver of Radnor Code 255-20B1N, which was in the August 19th review letter. You're also willing to comply with the right of way request of the township, whatever it may be.
Correct.
50, 60, or 80 feet.
And clearly, we'll have to provide a deed.
Sure. We get that. And you're, you're, you're going to correct the calculation errors as well?
It's already been corrected. That, that was reflecting this. As I said, there was kind of one question on the reviewer's side, and that, we cleaned both of those up for them immediately.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion in the matter of application 212, 21282560 West Ave, for, for preliminary final minor subdivision.
Can I just ask a few questions? Sorry. Just with respect to how the special use district or area is defined here? Is it for the entire AT&amp;T building through both portions of what you're proposing in this subdivision?
So, the subdivision piece, and I'd have to look at the zoning map just to verify, but I believe the special use, so that it's all Wayne Business Overlay District. There's a subset in the Wayne Business Overlay of the special use.
So, what we're asking for separates the front portion, the parking lot, which was the only portion of the AT&amp;T property that was part of the special use district in the, in the code. So, the remaining portion, which would be your primary AT&amp;T building and that back parking lot, were never designated in the code as special use areas. So, this creates a division essentially on the special use area line.
Mr. Falcone, you want to just throw that up on the, on the screen, just so that we know what parcel A and parcel B is?
Of course.
Commissioner Dow is actually asking a great question, because the letter of the 19th, it asks you to indicate what the zoning district was. I think there's two. So, let's start with parcel B. Are you stipulating that that's the special use area?
That's correct.
And there's no carryover to parcel A of special use area zoning, right?
That's correct. It was identified as the parking lot, the AT&amp;T parking area. Yep.
Okay.
The Bellevue parking area.
And parcel A is indicated as what zoning area?
So, if we look at the, the plan, I just want to show it on the plan, so that we can see that it's all been there. It's WBOD, but we have it listed in the top right corner of the plan itself. You can see here parcel A zoning summary, listed Wayne Business Overlay District, zoning summary parcel B, Wayne Business Overlay District, special use area.
Commissioner Dow, does that answer your question?
Yeah, a few other questions. So, I think the initial plan for subdivision that went into the conditional use hearings showed the lot being subdivided into three parcels, one being, the additional one being the West Avenue lot.
That's right.
Is that no longer in the plan, or is that-
That is no longer in the plan, right. So, AT&amp;T is the lessor with the township today. They will remain the lessor with the township with the 60, with the West Avenue parking lot.
Right. So, some of the conditions from the conditional use hearing required you to obtain a lease for the West Avenue lot, consistent with the terms of-
And that's been submitted.
Parcel B.
Been submitted to the, to the township solicitor. He's reviewed that. It's an amendment of the existing lease, kept all the same conditions and terms, and it simply relocates the area to the back lot from the front lot. But that was submitted to the solicitor's office, and he's given approval on that amendment.
Okay. Are there any other open conditions from the conditional use hearing, to your knowledge, that would require AT&amp;T to continue to be engaged in cooperative post the transaction?
Well, they, they need to remain, I guess, cooperative with us, as we are going to be striping that back lot for them. So, that's going to require their cooperation and understanding. They're aware of that. It's part of our agreement with them. Once we purchase the lot, they won't have any real say over the development of that front piece of parcel A, as we've identified it, and parcel B, I apologize. But we do, and we have submitted to them the easement, the emergency access easement. So, that requires their consent. We've gotten that to this point. So, they'll remain engaged, just as a neighboring property owner, but also because we will be essentially doing some work on their property in the back, that 60, or that West Avenue parking lot.
Okay. So, the easement and the lease are on file with the- Okay, so the easement and the lease are on file with the township, and the only remaining item would be to stripe that West Avenue lot?
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any additional questions? You know, I should probably give our consultants a turn here. Mr. Drummond?
I have nothing else.
Okay, Mr. Phillips?
Just kind of want to reiterate what Mr. Falcone was discussing, and a lot of the questions that were generated here are subject to the land development plan, which was the previous plan and not this. And this is purely subdivision of dividing it into two pieces for, for sale. No improvements. All the improvements are tied to the land development plan.
Sure. Mr. Norcini, one, one more shot?
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And public? Okay.
John Aiken again, 116 Belth Avenue, very briefly. In this process of meetings and the public being able to speak, now I can understand that applicants have unbridled time to present their information and respond. For us residents who want to speak, to have five minutes, it's almost impossible to develop an intelligent statement, which I hope it would be, in that five minutes. So that restriction that's put on us, maybe with a little minute there at the end, but there isn't enough time for those of us who are concerned to present our concerns fully. Thank you very much. I do appreciate the work you do.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. Okay. Any other comments? All right. In the matter of application 21282560 West Ave, preliminary final minor subdivision, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve this application. Can I get a second? Second by not? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for your time. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? We're adjourned.